She may.
We're gonna have to make it up for makeup for previous.
Yeah, I haven't seen the city council. No, it's on the works section.
Oh, my gosh.
If you want this one, take this.
No, I don't.
My husband has his workout tape.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, right.
The communications people just be handling.
Okay, okay.
I've seen it before.
Okay.
And she went upstairs.
Thank you upstairs and all of a sudden I hear.
And where do you want me to say that?
Yeah, I go there and she had slipped and she hit down right here in her face right on that bar.
Is that her?
And she had, she had her two foot keys so when she slipped, they didn't consider that. The one that's finally coming in but the other is.
And the, and so I think it's bringing the job.
Right on top of that, that's just trying to kind of.
So I lucked out.
And I'm like, I hope we should give it to you because we got there.
Okay. That's right.
She just followed right over the top of the two.
Yeah, we made it through.
Cut, cut. There, you know, if they get enough trauma to him, I can help you. So like, she waited three years to have to get a two.
How was Farm Day?
It was fun. It was fun.
It is.
I'm, you're gonna be better.
But it's.
Yeah, thanks for our community, you know, thanks for, for doing that, yes.
After today's news?
Well. Apparently it has an asterisk to it. Fix it or else. But yeah, kind of the Riverton thing, let's vote and get our placeholder in and.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I know, I know it's.
There you go.
Well, I just know that, that as far as like the.
You've, you've validated that.
Agriculture community, they so appreciate that.
Yeah, well, in as much, I can't find it online anymore minutes, but I'm wondering if they didn't do a pending litigation closed session?
Oh, they almost there, they almost there.
I don't know. Cause there's nothing really online about it.
Yeah.
But. For this year.
Yeah, for sure.
That's your new cost.
Well, that'll change six times between now and.
Right, but only in one direction.
Yeah, the kids is.
Yep.
So it goes back to, hey, I'll push up against the wall, take your lunch money.
And that, and it's such a huge experience, there's bacon on it so much there.
Be here next year for more money.
It was great.
Right.
Anyway.
So, that's the word out anyway.
Beautiful.
Waiting for some confirmation.
That could, that couldn't.
Offset some of the shortage there, so.
Right.
Ouch, sorry. He brings up every need.
No, I just want to make sure we know that there's not additional money to spend there. It's just helping to recover what we've already.
Definitely what I wanted to point out there is that we know that we had to change things around to facilitate some of those other projects we had in the city. So this will help us at least try to get back on track.
The better we do there, the better it's going to make that look overall.
Excellent.
Great. Any other questions regarding the general plan? Or not the general plan, the budget? Okay, then we'll move on to item 3.2, discussion pertaining to the general plan update.
Thank you. We've invited our consultant on the general plan to come in and present that update. I believe some of the council members know that our lead consultant, Susie Peathram, formerly with CRSa, was heavily recruited by another architectural firm in Salt Lake City by the name of FFKR. Very well respected, they're a larger firm. And in that recruitment process, she literally fought to keep our contract. And I reviewed the new proposal from FFKR. They're of course committing to the same terms as far as the costs associated with our contract. But in addition to that, they, because they're larger, they're able to provide additional service under that proposed contract. John Brimms has been reviewing the new contract with FFKR. I think we're nearly done with that. So they're here tonight to give you a presentation largely on our outreach plans for the summer and take any, of course, questions or comments that you might have at this point in time for them. So turn the time over to Susie.
Yeah, so first of all, I just wanted to introduce Mike Leishman, who's one of the partners. And he's going to tell you a little bit more about FFKR and the different services that we have in-house that will be bringing to the process. And then I'll jump in with my slides on the community engagement.
It's great to be here. And we want you to feel comfortable with our firm, and that's part of the reason we're glad that we were able to present today. So again, our company's called FFKR. We're a firm that does a little bit of everything. I don't know if you've heard of us, but we do everything in the valley. We do multifamily housing, we do K through 12, and we do a lot of LDS temple work. In addition to, we have a landscape planning studio. With Susie, we have about eight individuals in that studio plus a handful of other architects who fancy themselves planners, I'll just say that. So with the thing we can bring with Susie is that we have a lot of people. So our firm's 153 people right now. We have about 70 licensed architects, again, about 10 planners and landscape architects, and a little bit of everybody else in between. So again, we're very excited to be able to do this project with you, and we're very excited to have Susie here with us as well. So if you have any questions about the firm, we'd be glad to talk to you about it.
So mostly, I wanted to talk about the community engagement plan and what we're ramping up to do over the summer. So for community engagement, we essentially have three different tracks that we're taking to reaching out to the public and engage them during the process of the general plan. The first is doing community events so that we can get out there and reach just a diverse set of community members and stakeholders. So this is us going out to those pre-scheduled events that Harriman has going on throughout the summer and fall. So the benefit from going to them is that you tend to get people that might not always come out to a separate meeting, but they've got great opinions and we want to hear their voices. And we'll be there with a range of different materials just to get their engagement throughout the process. The second layer of community engagement is at the neighborhood level. So doing events where we can get out and capture some location-specific information in a more informal process that will largely be led by Michael and his group and the planning staff, as well as Jonathan Tammy, the communications team, working with the community liaisons. So what FFKR will do is provide the materials and training to enable Harriman City to go out and work on a smaller scale with different neighborhoods in the city and get their feedback during the process. And then the third one is more of the traditional citywide events where we, you know, do an open house or a workshop, different things that are looking to just listen and learn to the community as a whole. And our goal with this is to hear the range of perspectives that are out there in Harriman, knowing that not every neighborhood looks the same, has the same type of people or families or households. And we really want to show that there might be a range of opinions, but there's going to be some commonalities in what people value and what their vision is for the future. So that's our, that's our goal. And just giving you a little bit more detail about each of those and what events and strategies we're looking at. So for the community events, like I said, looking at the scheduled events on the community calendar. So, you know, potentially the rodeo, the Memorial Day, you know, which is a great opportunity to learn a little bit more about the history of Harriman and help them add to that timeline of history and background that'll go into the general plan. Town Days is probably going to be our big push with getting some materials and having a system set up where we're tag teamed with the community and the city-led table and booth at that event. So we've got the Hungry Harriman, the food trucks that happened, the hula that's at the park behind City Hall, looking at doing that indoor movie that's going to be in August over at the Zebra complex. And then in the fall, you know, we have the Harriman Howl and the Senior Social. And mostly, by the time we get to that point, it's going to be an opportunity just to remind people that there is a draft plan that's going to be out there and is going to be coming to planning commission and city council in November and December. So just making sure that people know what's going on. The neighborhood engagement, so Michael and his team have put together some ideas, and our team has put together some ideas, essentially looking at that informal opportunity. So having some living room chats that community liaisons might organize within their districts. Michael is committed to getting out there and walking a little bit of each neighborhood that's been identified in Harriman so that he can really feel like, you know, boots on the ground, he's understanding and hearing, you know, what people see and what their concerns or, you know, opportunities are in their neighborhood. The C in Harriman is a vision and idea diary. We're hoping to have an online component where people can post images that represent things that they might like to see, whether it's amenities like street trees or street furniture, or just different types of design styles and amenities that might, you know, happen as Harriman, you know, grows and evolves in the future. And then the other thing is looking at doing some pop-up events just in the neighborhood parks. So having the community liaisons be able to, you know, take some materials, just set up at a different park around the city, try to hit each of those neighborhood-level parks and just get some feedback, and also just provide information. So kind of that look, listen, and learn is the theme of the neighborhood engagement. A third level, that citywide engagement, the Community Builders, a book club, is an idea that Michael had, and that's picking three different books that as a, as a group people can read and then get together to discuss. The idea is to just provide some different perspectives on, you know, what, what planning's about, what building community is about, and just hearing, you know, some different voices and then getting together to discuss that. The C in Harriman is something with that online platform that can be a citywide engagement tool as well. And then the pop-up events, you know, doing those at more community, citywide center locations like the library or the rec center, or even downstairs in City Hall. We'll be using social media throughout the process. We're in the works of putting together a project-specific website that we'll host. And then at the end of the project, you know, we'll turn that domain name over to the city, and they can decide whether or not that's something to, to keep up and place the general plan documents on that website, or if it's just something that we close out once the process is done. Working with Y2K Analytics, doing a community survey, will be providing some questions, and they might either integrate them into a larger survey that they do, or break them out into some smaller surveys that are specific to the general plan and doing those throughout the process.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yes.
Who determined any questions on the Y2K survey? And can we see those before I go down?
Yeah, so we'll review those with the TAC. So that'll be on the agenda for the next TAC meeting. But basically, just working with city staff and the communications team and our project team, you know, what, you know, what do we want to try to, to get back, you know, from that community survey? We've looked at the past surveys and just want to make sure that we have some information that we're going to be able to tailor to the general plan for a good time. So the workshops, those are going to be, you know, kind of those mapping workshops. We are using an online scenario software called Urban Footprint. And what we'll be doing is building just a baseline scenario that takes your existing regulations, zoning, land uses, and transportation, put that into that scenario software, and then that will provide just output and data and information. And then we'll be doing two alternative scenarios based on the feedback that we get to the general plan, and then be able to see how those alternative scenarios impact the output, whether it's vehicle miles traveled, open space preserved, you know, access to parks and retail, so things like that. It's going to be a pretty nifty tool, we're excited to bring it to the process. And then just having a fairly conventional public open house, once we get to that draft plan stage before it goes to the planning commission for a public hearing, we'll have that open house and just have stations that let people see the different components of the general plan. So that covers the community engagement plan that we've put together. It'll take us all the way from, you know, the beginning of June, actually, sorry, end of May with the Memorial Day and rodeo, and then through, you know, November when we get to the public hearing stage with planning commission and city council. Just a couple bullet points on where we are with the project. Because of the transfer, things have slowed down a little bit, but we have been working behind the scenes, knowing that we'll have that contract in place soon. Our consultant science public finance, that I know you've worked with in the economic development department and on your impact fees, they've already pulled together a draft housing report. We presented that at the first TAC meeting that was last month. And some early findings, we'll be looking at that data, inputting it into the scenarios, and then as we go through the process, developing the strategies and goals perspective of that, that housing report. So that is going to function as your moderate income housing plan, and we just want to make sure that the strategies that are part of that plan are meeting the new requirements that came out of the state legislature this year. So we've got our scheduling for the community engagement plan down. We had our first TAC meeting last month, we covered that housing report and just the overall schedule. And then we started in this neighborhood identification process. So because we want to do that neighborhood level of engagement, we're also interested in knowing, you know, what people consider to be their neighborhood, and, you know, whether it's a subdivision or a development, or just because they're around a particular park. We want to kind of feel like how people self-identify with their neighborhoods. So we began a process to identify, you know, some general boundaries, and throughout the process, we're hoping to refine that so that everybody feels like by the end of the general plan, they will know, you know, which neighborhood they belong to. And then the city will be able to know which district, either city council district or community liaison district, each person is part of. So we've just done some, some early sketching, and basically I've come up with 20 different areas that could be a neighborhood. And that's one of the questions that I want to put in the community survey to see how many people identify with the names and areas that we've, we've outlined so far, or if there's other names that they think represent their neighborhood, or if they're just really not sure. And the goal of the neighborhood identification process, and this is just a diagrammatic representation, is to show, you know, where the commonalities are between different neighborhoods, even if they aren't geographically next to each other, and where the differences occur so that we know, you know, what people, you know, are looking for in the Cove neighborhood, access to open space might not be the same thing that people are looking for if they live near the town center. And that's, you know, our goal is to represent that range of, of opinions and visions and values throughout the process. So that's, that's our update and where we are now. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them, and we're just really excited to get things rolling.
John?
Just a, just a comment. I love the, the plan of the outreach program going forward. I think it would be great to obviously get as, as much out there in the public and as much in front of them as possible. I know it talked a lot about the community liaisons and facilitators. I would just ask that as you break, start to break those out in those neighborhoods, that you also engage the council members in their respective districts? Because they may be aware of issues, you know, in one neighborhood versus another that, you know, we may want to target as we get to those. But I, like I say, I'm sure that was part of the plan, but I just wanted to mention that we engage each council member in their districts as we, as we plan those and help them to really plan and prepare for those.
Yeah, that's a great point, and I'm glad you brought that up, because one of the things that we're hoping to do is keep the city council and a planning commission engaged throughout the process, so that by the time we get to that public hearing stage in November, December, you will feel comfortable with the content and direction of the plan, so that it's not like you're sitting down reviewing it for the first time, but you will have been there helping to, to build it, hearing what people have to say, and understanding the, the goals and objectives of the plan by the time we get there.
And I think that having been on the planning commission for a number of years before here, I think a lot of times that's probably one of the, the disconnects that happen is the planning commission and the planner, the city planning staff are very familiar with that document, as they continue to work through it. And sometimes there's a little bit of that lost communication between that group and the city council as they go through preparing that. But I think this will be a much more robust and engaging process than we've, than we've engaged in in the past, and looking forward to it.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
Appreciate all the work.
Thank you.
All right. 3.3 Harriman Crossroad Development Agreement Update.
Here we go. I know it's been a while since this has been on your agenda, and Ken Olson has been, been patient, but we felt like it was appropriate to let you know kind of what's been happening on that project. As the council knows, you'd have, several months ago, last fall, had really expressed an interest that you did want to see a development agreement for this southern area of our city adjacent to Redwood Road. And the plan is to accommodate a mixture of residential and commercial development.
We've charged quick clarification.
Yes.
I believe the direction at the time was to try to help them as they seem to be struggling to come up with a good development agreement.
Yes, yes, try to help them.
Kind of authorize them to engage them and try to see if we can help them.
Yeah. And, and we have had some meetings together, and we have been engaged, and I think they have, they're willing to implement a number of recommendations that the staff has made. I just, Brandon and I both went to the National American Planning Association Conference in San Francisco a few weeks ago, and we both independently had selected to attend a session on development agreements. Of course, that is a huge tool for development in our community. And listening to this panel of, of speakers, of experts on this topic, it really confirmed a number of issues that I feel like I have been seeing since I've been here with the city. And essentially, and that is that we have, we, together with the development partner, just have not really put enough energy and, and forethought into these plans to try to avoid a number of, of problems and pitfalls that we've all have experienced in trying to administrate and live with these development agreements. I just wanted to share just a few very high-level oversights from this session, just as a, kind of a reference point, and just seeking some further direction from the council. Essentially, this panel talked about how did cities start having, even doing development agreements? What did that really grow out of? And it was brought to saying that it really grew out of the preservation movement, that where preservation is very design-heavy, there was a, there was a great need for developing these design guidelines and entering into these, kind of these longer-term agreements on districts, on, on historic districts. And then we saw large, larger cities, very urban communities adopting these, these special zoning districts. That was a type of, a development agreement. But you do see it now into suburban communities. We have been using this as a tool, I assume probably since almost day one, or shortly after we incorporated 20 years ago. So it is certainly appropriate for a community of our type and size and where we are in our, in our kind of timeline of development to be using these as a tool. There are a lot of design guidelines that have been prepared that a lot of consultants will use and reference to. So there certainly is a lot of wealth of information on this topic, but it is a very specialized kind of work that a consultant might be engaged in. They also talked about the types of guidelines that are, that are often used in these development agreements. And these are the kind of the three main categories, descriptive language, prescriptive and performative. And you can see in the bottom of this slide, kind of what are the strengths and weaknesses of each of these types. Looking at our development agreements, they have largely been more in this descriptive section. And it has nice language, but it does kind of create some ambiguity, and there, there is definitely some challenges there. The prescriptive is where we get more specific, and I think we've been trying to move this draft agreement a little bit more towards that. The last time John Brimms did a review of the development agreement, he sent it back to me saying, "I want more quantities on all of these, you know, proposed improvements." He wanted more specifics, which is good, because if we, if we have a quantity in the agreement, then it's very easy to turn to the development partner and say, "This is what was agreed on you, you know, this is the benchmark that you have to hit." But the restriction on, on kind of moving in that direction is these agreements take years to build out, as we know. It takes sometimes decades, and the market changes, and then we're stuck because we didn't really build flexibility into our agreements. And then the third column is this performative, which this panel of experts said that this is, tends to be a little bit better. I recently went to a presentation on the Daybreak Development Team. And whether, whether you like that project or not, they certainly have had a lot of market success, and they tend to use a little more of this performative. They do have some ability to react to the changing market over the years and potentially decades of development that that project will be building out. So these are just kind of different styles. But you get these types of, you know, the prescriptive and the performative type language from really employing a professional consultant who is really skilled and has expert, you know, background in these areas. Working with, with Ken Olson and his team, he has certainly employed an attorney. I know that they have spent quite a bit of money working on attorney to try and craft the language that is acceptable to them as well as to our city. I know that they have relied on experience. They have studied and surveyed development projects in the, in the valley, in, in Park City and other areas, looking at what they think is relevant and, and marketable for our community. They put together a number of images that I think we have tend to, that we've resonated with. We tend to have liked some of the images that we've shown here in the past. So there certainly has been an effort on, on the developer's part, and we have certainly tried to bridge the gap on trying to avoid some of the pitfalls, some of the mistakes that I think we've, we've all have seen in the past. But it's my opinion that we're not there yet, and I am frankly overwhelmed with the other work of the city. And I had mentioned to Ken, I said, "I'm not sure that I can continue to mature this to a level that I'm comfortable with and feel like we're going to have a win-win project in the end." In the 16 months that I've been here, I've seen a great deal of frustration in trying to execute or administrate some of these agreements, because they, everybody's trying their best, but they've, they've been difficult. And I certainly don't want to bring another one to the table that could have some further difficulties for us as a city. I, I think we recognize the advantages of doing a development agreement potentially in this area. There, the developers certainly put on the table some, some things that we are interested in, I believe that the council has expressed interest in, that's why you've asked me to try and work with them. We can continue down this road. The draft that I've included in your packet, I mentioned in my memo, John Brimms has not reviewed yet. The developer has tried to respond to John and put more numbers and figures into the, the agreement so that we, we can do maybe a better job of measuring compliance. But anyway, so that's kind of where I'm at. That's kind of where I'm at with this project.
Sounds like the direction that you're asking for is should we continue to try to do this for them? One, that's not really our expertise, and I, at least for me, I think the answer's no. Our, our thought was to help point them in the right direction at the last meeting, as I recall, and said, "Well, we, you know, we don't have money to employ these consultants, etc." And we said, "Well, the only way that you really get something like this done is to do it this way. Let's see if we can get them down the road a little bit, but we can't do it for them."
I, I do think we've matured the agreement a little further than maybe where we've been on some of our other projects. I think it has been better, and they've been very agreeable to accept a number of recommendations that we've made. But even, you know, with as much experience that I've had in the marketplace in this role as city planning, this is a very specialized field. And in fact, I'm even wondering who would we turn to, who would they might turn to in our marketplace to try and, and get some of the more quality development agreements? And I'm not even sure, I haven't shopped, I haven't looked to see who might be specializing in writing these types of agreements. But I can guarantee you, it's not an architect, it's not a civil engineer, it's probably not even, you know, it's not an attorney. Somebody who really specializes in this. And I think if we were able to, you know, come to that agreement, that that's the level of, of expertise and performance that we want to be at, I really do think we could potentially have an agreement that would be a win-win for both parties. I'm just concerned if, if the draft that you see in your packet, if we kind of clean that up, we get John Brimms comfortable with it, yeah, maybe it's a little bit better than maybe where we've been on some of our other agreements. But after sitting through that session in Cali, in San Francisco, I just think we, we could go further if we could get a little more energy into this project.
And on a lot of our kind of sidebar conversations, it's been our first, our frustration as well with these development agreements is none of them seem to really work the way they were intended to by the time it actually comes around. At least with several others, almost downstreams of the city, we can never quite get what we, we don't ever get the fixtures we're shown, we never get the quality that, that we're really going for, and it's not, it's not anyone's fault other than it wasn't done to the level that you described.
Well, it, it's a maturing in the marketplace. You know, I think we, we've done things based on what was probably common in the market, but as we've lived with them, we've all have seen some of the struggles that comes along with that. Like I said, it, we're more in that descriptive camp. And, and while the original partner is well, well-meaning, we have an agreement, we understand one another, then portions of the project, of course, are being sold or transferred to another party.
At that point, but.
And then when we start trying to, you know, hold, you know, try to build that vision, sometimes it gets difficult.
So your suggestion is?
Well, you know, I, I felt like this wasn't ready. This wasn't ready for primetime. The, the applicant said, "Hey, I have spent more time on this. This is a draft that, as I said, John Brimms hasn't reviewed yet. If you want us to try and continue to mature this." I'm just saying that I, I'm finding my time is more limited now than it used to be. I'm going to be spending a lot more time working on the general plan.
It's not our job to, to, to write these for.
Yeah. So we, we've done some good. I would like to see it be better before I came back to you.
Personally, I mean, and I haven't had time to read through the entire thing, got hundreds and some odd pages to review in five days' time.
Yeah, yeah.
But what I've seen so far, actually, is we're just kind of discussing, I actually have more questions and concerns now than I did before. So I agree, I don't think it's.
Yeah, and I think that comes from, again, the nature of trying to mature this more than we've seen in the past. But that takes us into a realm that we haven't been a part of in the past, which means there's more questions for us to ask as we get deeper into it.
Which kind of comes, I think, to the old theme, you know, we have progressed a bit, and we're at a point where it has to go even further, and how far do we try to take it with limited resources?
Yeah. I mean, there, there could be other alternatives where maybe we really simplify this. I think where the applicant or the developer's at is they wanted a certain level of assurance with the zoning, so that long-term the zoning would be, you know, essentially vested, that we wouldn't be looking at future zoning changes on this property. Maybe there's a simpler agreement that we could make, but we did bring that to you at one time, and it seemed like the council was more interested in having something that had design guidelines and standards, and we wanted to kind of mature it more like what we've done in the past. So that was the direction that we, that we've taken on this project so far.
Maybe a way forward is, I mean, it's difficult to, to do it in a council setting with the quorum, but as we do with some other developments, to set up some meetings where two of us at a time can equally move over their specific concerns and then see what common ground we have and see where we go. can equally move over their specific concerns and then see what common ground we have and see where we go.
I think the main thing I wanted to communicate to the council is what we've been working on and why this hasn't come back to you for a more formal action. And what now I think, my recommendation is that if we really want a successful, clear development agreement, I think we need to do more. Based on, like I said, this one presentation that I saw, I've seen what other communities who insist on requiring, you know, these standards, I think we can get. But we, but we need a lot, we need more energy in order to get there.
I think Jared, you know, brings up a, a good option. And I guess that I want to know if that's a potential option, you know, with the individual to say that we will, you know, individually invest some time in meeting, like you say, at least two at a time with them to, to maybe ask some more of those questions. Because what I've found is, is we ask, as we bring those questions, sometimes we get answers and sometimes it generates more questions. And, and ultimately, I think that's what we really want, is we want a very involved process with a lot of good dialogue because that's when we always get a better end product there. So I'm open to what Jared's suggesting. I guess if everyone else is, is open to that as well.
Kind of what I'm thinking, Ken, is this is my fourth round, council. And I think we've discussed this for most of that time. It seems every, every time we, we end up in this kind of endless loop. So if I'm, if I'm sitting in his shoes and going, "This, this is all that ever happens and we're hardly getting there." So we think maybe we kind of cut through this process. Because every time it comes back, like you said, I have more questions and concerns now. And we kick it back down and, and we make some progress, but each time that happens. Just maybe a little bit unorthodox to suggest, but maybe, because we need, we need to digest this version and ask our questions specifically. And I'm thinking unique, maybe designate two of us who are willing to spend some time with planning staff, go through what has been done, um, get a, you know, a time for Ken's point of view. I would want kind of a commitment to, you know, some kind of timeframe to give me some direction. So we commit to a timeframe of council's going to review this, have our meeting with planning department, figure out what it is, what our options are going forward. Commit to have a meeting by a certain date to kind of give direction and go from, get, see if we can get this moving in one direction or another, whether it's, "Yep, this is a path forward," or "Nope, we just don't agree." And they need to look at something else or other options. But at least that's, if I were a new shrewd, that's what I would want to see is give, give me a timeframe where we can actually do something.
Yeah.
I think that's fair.
Good.
The way you're saying is, is correct. I mean, you being a fourth year and, um, Ken has been around for a long period.
If Nicole were here, I'm sure she would say, "They've been patient. They've tried to engage the process and..."
No, I, I have some reservations.
I would be extremely frustrated if I were sitting there going, "Look, I'll call..." Look, oh, Gary isn't strong. So we can be calm, if not, that would work. So it sounds like that might be agreeable if we kind of approach it that way at this stage.
Yeah, we, we do need to, I mean, we've worked on a development, if I can speak. We've worked on a development agreement and then got quite ways close, we fell. And then the city actually came and just said, "We want to use a template." So we had started returning. We got to there, then they want us to add architectural control for all the buildings. And that was great and that was needed, other than just the amenities and open space. So that was added. And then we got, that felt we were right there.
And it's just this air that's, yeah, then it went to the, then the city did hire a consultant
and we pretty much agreed with all he said with a few little things. And so that, now we're here. So it is just, in our minds, it feels, I mean, if I read this, I can start right at the asphalt and redwood and show you how the landscape goes up the fence, show you where the commercial is, the main roads, the architectural, the colors, and the amount of stone, the amount of space, the trails, the amenities, the smart footage. So to me, it's pretty clear. I, I'm more than happy to do what you're suggesting, but I'm just, I'm not sure what it really means.
It means that we won't be caught in this endless loop of coming to council. We have too many questions, we run out of time, we can't get into details, we send, kick it back down. At least I feel like we're in this endless loop.
If I leave here tonight, we're, I don't even, I feel like I don't know where I'm going. Am I going to a meeting with two councilors? You guys get back with me?
At least if you guys, I mean, there's two of us that, I'll commit to, I've spent some time on it. As I said, we've discussed it quite a bit. If somebody else wants to join me, we'll schedule a meeting. I'll commit to, you know, in the next two weeks with my partner. That'll give us enough time to do it, to piece with them, get our questions. And then schedule a meeting with you all. Every couple of, say, by like June 15th. Is this kind of the, the timeframe?
I'll, I'll do it with Jared.
That timeframe sound all right? Two weeks, just me and planning, you know?
There's some takeaways I'll share with you guys as far as maybe what you could be looking at as you're reading videos.
Can you say that?
Yeah.
All right, then we'll move on to the proposed rezone of seven point five acres of land located at or near fifty-two hundred West Harriman Boulevard from A1 to C2.
And this is Ken's project. I didn't know if Gary was involved in this one or not.
He's not.
Just you, okay. So this is a rezon from agricultural to C2. It did go to the planning commission and receive a recommendation for approval. As you can see, this is west from the auto mall property that we've been rezoning, as well as some C2 along the primary or the frontage road. And this will be coming for you for action presumably at our next city council meeting.
So what's the general plan?
Uh, it is commercial.
On the general plan?
Yeah, yeah. That was about a year ago when we updated our general plan, we added another commercial area, yes.
See any issue for matches or general plan? Any questions? Okay, all right. So it looks like we're all comfortable with that.
Okay.
Three point five discussion of a text change to the definition of retail tobacco specialty building to include electronic cigarettes and e-cigarettes.
So retail tobacco specialty business is one of our prohibited uses. But with the increase of, um, kind of vape, uh, the popularity of vaping, we felt like we should amend our definition of this land use to include, um, e-cigarettes as defined by the Utah code. So again, this is a prohibited use to it. We just wanted to further clarify that it includes this, uh, this product.
Any concerns with the council?
And again, it received a planning commission recommendation for approval.
Okay, okay. All right, um, trails update, Wendy.
Which can you fill it back out?
Let's see, you want this, Wendy?
No, I just have one side. Okay, as you know, we've been working on some new trails this spring. The Bonneville Shoreland section from White Hollow to Diamond Back has been completed in this open. We have had some struggles with the weather causing really soft conditions on the trails. So we've got a lot of tracks that shouldn't be there from bicycles and horses. And we have had some motorized use on that trail. So we're trying to kind of block all that down and try to keep people, all users off the trails when it's so muddy and soggy. The trail's been really well received. There's some beautiful views from it. So if you haven't been up there, I would encourage you to go take a look. That trail was funded by Salt Lake County Parks Recreation and we're very grateful for their contributions to our trail system and helping us expand that. Mustang and Stampede have gone through the planning commission process and were, did receive conditional use approval. We'll start working, we have a contractor lined up for those two trails and he'll probably start in a couple of weeks when he finishes a project in Draper. And then Eric's Trail Expansion goes from the very popular Eric's Trail down the other side of the ridge and connects down to the Party Rock Access on the other side. That one was scheduled for planning commission last week, but the meeting was canceled. So it will be on planning commission for next week for approval. So just to give you an update, kind of where we are on trails. And thinking through, I think this is going to be our summer. This is what we're doing this year. And then we're going to really work on some trailheads and getting some trailheads installed and, and kind of back off from trails for a minute. So just to give you an update on that, are there any questions or concerns on any of that?
How much distance does that add to our existing trail system if we complete all these?
Oh. I couldn't get you that number. I can't remember off the top of my head.
Okay.
I'll give you that number.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a lot, it's good.
It is good.
Well, just make a quick comment kind of for the record. I know that Sherri spoke in the council's still role as well. And that just in my meeting with, with him, with the Southwest Mayor's, we actually discussed this area and the county's property adjacent. And he's very supportive of, of this. So speaking of county support and funding, um, there's a lot of recreational opportunities up here. And thi- this is going to help kind of drive that conversation as we get these things, get trailheads in place and show them we're serious in the office out there. I think we'll find some, some support with, not with him, but with others as we talk to them.
Yeah, we're excited about that. And I've, I've talked to some of the county staff and shared some formats and ideas and they're very excited about it too. So I appreciate your work on that end. And hopefully do get that connection out to young folks, that would be amazing.
And we appreciate the county working together to do it, way to fly, like.
Yes, absolutely.
All right.
So that's it on that one.
Okay, and then the review of the draft park ordinance.
Yes, so some of you were missing the last time we met on this. We did update, um, the ordinance to read unauthorized motor vehicles should not be permitted beyond designated roadways, designated trails and designated parking areas or parked facility or trail. Does that work or do you want something more specific?
Say anything?
So the concern was that in the future, we might have some motorized access available. So we added, the phrase is unauthorized motor vehicles shall not be permitted beyond designated roadways, designated trails and designated parking areas and a parked facility or trail. Is that acceptable or do we need to change that language for the next draft?
I think it's good. That way we don't have to circle back around when they are allowed because it will be designated.
Designated as such, yeah.
Are there any other questions or concerns about the draft at this point? So we'll probably bring it back to the next work meeting. Gordon and I are flying back from Pennsylvania that day. So it might even be the next one. We'll, we'll talk about it and see how we feel about that.
Sure, I'm tired of you, right?
Yeah. See if we really make it back.
With the right drugs, you'll be okay.
Do what?
With the right drugs, you'll be fine.
Yes.
No, 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 don't mind that one.
Okay.
Thank you, Wendy, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
What's up, everyone, what's up, honey?
Last item on our work agenda is city manager updates.
Okay, we got two, I'll get my first in, see how this holds. Just wanted to let you know that we have given notice by the church, want to do some camping on their property there at Jupecrest, oh, uh, Jupecrest, that red church that's on the west side of the road. They own sixteen acres of that mountain up behind there. They've asked us permission to camp on their, their scout program, scouting program. It's their property, but they go through the, uh, sorry, large event permit process through the county that's, that's been due to do. And they, you know, they're, they're going right, they didn't cross their T's. But if people see them up there, they might freak out. But it's up there on that church's property, so.
So occupy the.
And then we have public property next to it. So it's like, if they camp on their property and they walk over our trail, this is part of it. We are a little cautious on the fire and Riley's going to, it might work on her.
Oh, well, we love our scouts. Sherri's in Vegas, big campfire.
Right, yeah, I could be the shit.
Riley just likes to rub dirt on him and to bark.
Oh, man.
It would be the same thing though, when fires are banned, it'd be bad.
I'd say it's the scouts.
So everybody goes to Riley's, then we have staff, I give you some updates and things. Uh, Wendy Cole has dropped her plans off, so we got thirty days.
That's breaking, breaking down.
Jordan, Cat, Jordan is actually excited Catherine being on so much. And she already promised me they'll get their reviews done today, so we're working hard on that. Uh, I want to just talk about chip seal, latest update on that. We'll have some of that in a lot of meetings that call in.
Yeah, so the chip seal, we've had a third-party evaluation of a line engineering firm. They've come back with their findings. Once that's formalized, we've been working with John Brimms and a third-party attorney as well to review that, along with the contract documents as part of the project. And so making sure that we're following all the, you know, the rules inside the contract and both parties are playing by the rules. So at this point, we have the draft, we have some solutions to fix the problem. Now we're just trying to get a letter drafted to send to the contractor to say, we have to, we contractually have to give them an opportunity to fix the problem. And so we, we're going to allow them to have the opportunity to fix the problem. They obviously can choose to do it or choose not to. And so we're preparing to have an answer based on the decision they make.
That always makes you worry, you have somebody fix the problem that created the problem.
But contracts say that we have to allow them. So we have to give them the opportunity.
But that's still have to be up to standards.
Yes, so it has to be up to standards. So they have to meet the specifications and all those things that are required still.
So they don't think they're going to end up right back here and cost a beating.
Hopefully not. So to date, we have not paid them anything. We've been helping their invoice, um, until we get an answer on whether we. So, um, hopefully within the next week or two, we'll have an answer. So we'll, we'll prep and hopefully send a letter to them by the end of this week. First and next time Brimms at a conference, so it might be Monday before.
And any council seeing the two safety issues we did together, get re-struck. We actually have some dry weather from, and also the monitoring, street sweep is been out there, get rid of that. Keep the, the least amount of debris on the road as much as possible.
Did this particular job just encompass, um, give me, give me the entire area this particular job encompassed?
So we have Anthem Park Boulevard, we have a portion of Main Street, portion of one hundred and thirty-four Southwest and sixty-four hundred West, Rose Crest Road down near Mountain Corridor. And then Spring Canyon Road in the Cove. And am I missing one?
Jupecrest.
Yeah, I said Harriman Boulevard, not Main Street. And Juner, Juner Crest, a small section in Juner Crest.
And we've had the same issues in all sections, correct?
Same, same company.
Yep, okay.
So just a kind of a, I shouldn't say follow-up question, a backup question. So a lot of this, especially Anthony's, my naked woods, and people are constantly asking questions, constantly.
Oh, yeah.
Trying to do my best. So one of, one of the main ones actually is, these are fairly new roads. Why in the heck are we doing this in the first place?
Oh, this is general.
I've attempted, I've attempted my answer from the maintenance side because I've asked it before, but. Give me another, give me another, actually.
I think we gave you one in a paragraph.
Right, so I'll, maybe I'll, and you can tell me if I'm, if I did a good enough job with the initial answer I gave. I said I would follow up and find out for sure. But told them it's really part of our maintenance schedule, right? So the road might look good, but there are cracks, deformed, even though it's six or seven years old. And if you don't, if we don't seal the surface, those cracks will continue. And by the time it's noticeable to you, we've got an even bigger problem. So it's, I categorize it as one of the necessary evils. I'm, I'm a car guy. I hate seeing the rocks go up and I avoid those areas at all costs. And that's what ticks people off, is used to perfectly good road and you got rocks everywhere. But explain that if it's part of a maintenance schedule, we have a maintenance schedule. And I want to say that Ed had tutored me in this four years ago of, we do this about every six to seven years on a schedule throughout the city for that very reason.
So that's good.
I thought Bonnie was diagramming the council's attention span on the one.
So we're about to drop them off, right?
Hopefully.
Roughly from zero, you've got a pretty, a really nice road. It slowly starts deteriorating all the way. At about five years, it starts dropping.
Like the turf is drying, it's getting lathered, if you pay attention, it's drying out.
It's drying out.
So, uh, you want to get twenty years out of your road. But the problem is, is from brand-new to twenty years, there's quite a big difference in the quality of the road, quality of the ride and, and everything. So the typical thought here is if you wait till roughly in this area to here, you're looking at a full-depth reclamation of the road, similar to what we're dealing with over in heritage. Starts getting to the point where no matter what you throw at it, you're just throwing money through all.
Deb's assumption is good road.
Exactly. Now, if you take and start applying a, uh, surface treatment, either a slurry seal, a chip seal, everyone has a slight different length of what it extends the life of that road. But at whatever point you choose to put it on, that, it's not going to improve the quality of the road and it's going to try to extend the life of the road in that quality. So typically at around the five, six-year mark, when we start, we've got a good use out of the road so far that dollars are spent. We try to add another one. And it'll basically do this. And then we try to add another one and it'll keep doing this. And eventually you're going to get to this point where you want to replace.
And eventually you're gonna get to this point where you wanna replace it, because what it does is, these treatments are pennies on the dollar. To extend the life of that asphalt, if you don't.
Versus replacement.
Exactly, if we don't add those to it, you're gonna be. Tens of, ten dollars per square foot instead of thirty-five cents a square foot.
Have a great handout, the life asphalt is really boring to me.
I'm looking for a handout. You done showed a presentation today that I went to, that had a handout that showed a really good color chart of when you should do these treatments and what works and what doesn't.
I, I just.
I'm looking for that.
I love that, but.
If I find that handout, I'll send it out.
Please, I can post it up there.
Won't be as good as Bonnie's though, you know.
Exactly, I thought Bonnie did a good job. Sprint pole.
Maybe use different colors.
Okay, uh we got, housing week come up, May thirteenth through eighth, May eighteenth something, you might have got that email up, Utah Living Towns. There's a big trigger uh meeting at the downtown on the fourteenth. And then there's gonna be a Saturday meeting, which I'm just excited about, it says they're retargeting eighty-two cities. And they need to be a part of this and be involved and be watching that, and we're gonna dictate, oh suggest, sorry, suggest, sorry. Suggest some staff attend these, actually wanting to know what council will be attending, so we make arrangements, there is some registration, tell me some towns that's asking about. This is Senate Bill thirty-four, um so.
I intend to attend. Unless I, it's a, it's a little bit frustrating, I'm sorry, to spend publicly, but I saw the email, had no communication with the league about it until they announced it, but this is what they did.
I knew this coming up, because nobody's down at the St. George, I asked the, the league, uh living in town, the city town, and asked them, what do we need information, how will we know? He said, we'll be always giving you notice to be, these meetings are coming up, and we knew something was coming up, we said no wind up today. Um so I guess.
I still don't know what, what their purpose is behind it.
I don't think I, I don't think I saw an email today.
It was there.
Yeah, you should have.
I can't, I saw it late yesterday, early this morning, I didn't read the entire thing, but I just saw the tag of, it's in there, they sent out a weekly.
Yeah.
Newsletter almost.
This was actually just specific to this and one other thing coming up, and I will forward that to you all tonight.
But I, so I'll reach out to Kim and then ask, what's the, what's the purpose there?
It's funny, you were.
It was a little vague on details, it just had a kind of a.
Yeah.
They had that classes that are under, if you even taught it, you would have thought they would announce this type of things, people would know about it and nothing much.
Yeah, I'm sure, even if our convention sets up for your work, there's no mention of the under, which is sponsored of that bill, um.
The convention was last week.
Yeah, that's on.
I'm just saying, we're not in this opportunity, we've been going up the county, we've had people up the county, because I know it's been harder for council to be there, those, those meetings and talking about the. Southwest Corner Valley a lot and they're great, we've been, every news article that's been coming out.
Says fifteen and three.
That nobody can attend, because it's the middle of the workday.
We've had people that are, I understand that.
But you know, that's of all the conversation we're having, all the extra work we're doing on the subject and the organization, that we're paying a bunch of money.
To represent us.
To help represent us.
I will let know your frustration too, so um. I already talked to him last week, last week.
Feel free to give him a heads up. You can re, you can reinforce what Jared, he's already heard from Jared.
Okay, that's great. Uh I like when you talk about park grant.
Oh, yes, I'm looking at distances and trails.
Kind of going to use up.
She was like.
Oh, yes.
Yes, so we're really excited because I, I told, I, I told you guys now a few weeks ago that we applied for a grant for our first inclusive playground. And we were awarded the grant, so I'm really excited.
Yeah.
Um so about eleven entities applied, five were awarded and we were one of the five, the other ones are West Valley City, Lehigh City. Um and then two, Salt Lake County, and they also told us, the Arsene Middle was one of the best they saw and received the highest review, so.
Yay.
Wrong statistic.
Who does the grant come from?
The grant is from Game Time through the Utah Recreation and Parks Association, so. Um our landscape architect Heidi Chagroux went through a training and then she wrote the bulk of the grant communications, helped us clean it up. Um Jonathan from engineering was a big help as well, they've really been spearheading the project. And it's in collaboration with Ivory Homes and they have been a great partner on this project, so we're really excited about the park. It will be on sixty-four hundred west and approximately one hundred and thirty fifth south, um just outside the June first dates neighborhood. And it will be, it should be finished this fall, so it will also be a national demonstration site for inclusive play. And so that's a big deal in our industry and so we're really excited about that.
That's awesome, good work.
So I just wanna, I wanna say, because we talked even about this at last council meeting, about the ways that we're looking at saving money. And then when Alan was talking about how we're gonna underspend on some of this stuff, that's why, it's because we start looking outside from our own budget to try and look at alternative ways of fund this kind of thing. We can put in nicer things and not all on the immediate backs of paramedics.
Yeah, and this is gonna be a great, great amenity for our community, so I'm really excited.
Good job.
That's a great example of empowering you guys to do it.
Yeah.
So we talked about a lot of things, heard some good things, said all good things, like in reality, uh the big picture. But also, I come back, I have a, a framed presentation on my table, I think no one else wanted to store it, but. We've seen our award for our park, uh architectural design, for our park behind the building.
Nice.
Uh estate award.
When we get stuff, we don't know what to do, if we just sit on press desk, particularly with Con.
And I, what can we do?
Pretty sure there's some wall space that we can.
So Tammy's gonna make up a, she's trying to, four person, she's gonna help us find a wall that we start to hang all these awards. And then the ones that, you know, tiny, we'll just replace with new awards. And I think some of our better awards are our financial awards, I said that, and I'm more proud of our financial record than, than probably. I love our park design getting an award, but. Boy, it's, I.
Yeah, just move right, move on.
Just, just move on.
But to me, to me, having a good state of your financial report and uh and getting a little award or.
They complement each other.
I was just gonna say, it's because of grounds like that, they, they do all work, you do allow us that.
No, I just, I know I probably owe our parks, I don't necessarily tell them, it's a great design. But when you have somebody to review our financials and our, where we present our financials, to get an award for that, that's, in our, in our business, that's, that's a big thing. So yes, Wendy, you know how I love parks.
It's, it's.
Kidding.
So with that, I wanna segue, Alan has the great honor to talk about a bond rating change in our city.
Over the last three or so months, we've been going through a review by standard of ours, our financials, our local economy, so forth. And the other day, we got notice that our bond rating on our sales and franchise tax bonds are being increased from a double A minus to a double A plus.
Good job.
Uh we were already at a double A plus on our water bonds, now our governmental bonds are matching that. They said it was because of our financial management and our local economy is what's making the moves.
Awesome, awesome, fantastic.
Uh that is great news, and I like hearing Herman Ashkin, because for people that get their own financial rating, they, they go, we give them a double A plus, what does that mean? Was it, and then Ashkin already did, that's.
You know, it's hard to give an exact on that.
But in terms of like a consumer one, is it a five hundred or a seven hundred?
Well, in the state of, well, in the state of Utah, triple A is the highest you can get. And basically the state and the school districts have triple A, that's all. And the reason the school districts do is because the state guarantees all of their bonds, so they get the state's rating. We're as high to that as we can get without being at that level.
Without the state backing our laws.
Yeah.
Nice.
Can you get that though?
Seven fifty pounds.
I'm actually trying to get the county to do it.
So at our school, we're going till we get an A.
Plus.
That's great.
Yeah.
So it's just great news, uh mayor and council, that's all I have, uh and I wanna make public comment again. Because public might give a buzz that we have these things, we bring up to date, this is stuff that comes out, we feel it's important to get in front of the council on the information. That's happened since we posted, too, we're very adamant in our structure that we post and give you the materials, the student and council gym are promoting. One week in advance, so that always goes out on Thursday, so you have a whole week, so the public has it for home. This is just information, we don't act on any of these items, it's just information so that the public, you know what's going on.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you for getting through it in such a timely manner. Um I see that we have a closed meeting scheduled for later, do we have sufficient time between now and our general meeting to get through it?
No, I, we can get through it.
Okay. Part of it, I can get through my stuff, but John's not yours.
I would accept the motion to temporary suspend.